Welcome to the Lawrence City Council. Today is June the 28th. The record reflects that the Council Vice Budget Chairman, David Abdi, is here. Council President and Voting Member Kendris Vasquez is here, and Voting Member Brian Depeña. We're all present. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I applaud the leaders who have the eyes of America and to the Republic where she stands.
I didn't see the minutes. Have you all seen the minutes? I haven't seen them.
I have not seen them.
Then we will pass on that until we get them. Oh, we got a lot of stuff to do tonight. I know that we have an individual here that I'd like to take out of order. Could we be willing, off of Table Matters frankly, is there a motion to take document 11016 off of the Table Matters?
So move.
Motion made.
Second.
And second in all favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. I brought in, I asked Mr. Lexi Vega, thank you, to attend this evening's meeting. In your package, gentlemen, we have some documentation on the payment in lieu of tax program. We talked about this briefly. What I wanted to call to your attention, let me back up. Let me set the table. In our city, we have a lot of parcels of property that go untaxed. They are, it could be a city-owned property, we're not taxing ourselves. They could be another government entity. They could be a quasi-public entity. Or they could be purely a nonprofit. They could be a church. They could be a school. They could be a hospital, or any other kind of nonprofit. So there's a variety of these nonprofits out here. And by federal law, we are not allowed to tax them. So throughout the country, there has been an effort in many municipalities to ask these individuals, these organizations, if they would be willing to go ahead, and it's called a payment in lieu of taxes, or otherwise known as a pilot. And the idea here is that the nonprofits do things for the city, and they are, that's the reason why they have this tax-exempt status, is that they are contributors in some way, and this is a benefit that we don't tax them. But they, on the other side, they also are the recipients of various city services. Things such as, obviously, police, fire, the snow plowing, snow and ice removal during the wintertime, road repair work. There's a lot of different things that the city does provide. And so in our city, we have a tremendous number of amount of money that is, that is non-taxable. I'm looking for my letter. Thought I had it a second ago. In our city currently, at least from the last tabulation, we have $733 million in assessed value that's going untaxed. If we were to tax them at the amount that they are zoned in, or whatever their classification is, at the full value, we would, we would be bringing an additional $24 million into the city. Of course, that's a big chunk of money. If we cut that down a little bit more, because that's the big number, we cut that down a little bit more, and we take away the Lawrence Housing Authority, the Redevelopment Authority, the City of Lawrence, our parks, City Hall, that number dwindles down significantly. But what the proposal here, and I'm going to ask Mr. Vega to come up here shortly, is to, ultimately, is to ask. One of the things that I've learned in my life is if you don't ask, you're probably not going to get anything. Sometimes you need to ask. And sometimes people are willing to give you something if you do ask. And in this particular case, the proposal that is on the agenda this evening is to ask, is to ask these nonprofits, fully understanding that they do a lot for the city, but asking them if they'd be willing to go ahead and contribute at a certain level to defray the cost of the services that we're offering. So, Mr. Vega, can you come up for, I just, I want to make sure I'm accurate in some of the information. What you'll see in your package this evening is a sample letter. You will also see a list of the various nonprofits who are not government-related nonprofits, the amount of money, their total value of their parcels are worth. You will also see, and this is where Mr. Vega can provide his expertise, the assessment and classification report for FY 2017, that is a breakdown of the amount of money. So, Mr. Vega, just to begin this conversation, how much, once we move away from the government entities in our city that are tax-exempt, how much are the other ones, the schools, the churches, the hospitals, all the other nonprofits, how much is that assessed value?
I believe when I submitted your report, it was in the range of, God.
Would it be on here, Mr. Vega? Would it be on the sheet of paper that you gave to us?
That is the entire city. So the valuation, as you mentioned earlier, is 735, roughly $735 million in valuation. If you exclude all of the city-owned cemetery, state properties, I believe the number is roughly in the low $20 million range, if I'm not mistaken. It is in an email, but the spreadsheet was pretty lengthy. It was about 92 pieces of property, the Excel spreadsheet.
So I have the three pages. Oh, here it is. Would it be 12 million? Does that sound about right?
That sounds about right.
Okay. So almost 13 million, that's, there's the answer. $13 million worth of property, total value of property, includes land. That's the land value.
That's the land value, correct. So we spoke about so many things, and one was abstracting the land value from the full and fair cash market value. So just to give you a heads up, you're in the $130 million range, if you're adding the full and fair cash market value. But I can definitely provide that information to the entire Finance Committee.
Now, in the proposal that we're, that I'm considering, and I'm hoping the other councils will consider as well, there is, there was a draft one-for-one general street. This Lawrence General Hospital is our biggest, biggest nonprofit, as far as land is concerned. And in this particular letter, we came to a, an amount that we thought would be fair and reasonable to ask. Could you talk a little bit about the various options that we have, the calculus, the ratios, the formulas by which we could possibly ask a nonprofit to make a contribution?
Sure. There's been a bunch of studies conducted, and I've kept a folder for many years on pilot programs. For instance, there was a community, I believe it's Haverhill, who tried to enact a pilot for all the exempt entities excluding certain ones, for instance, churches, boys' club. But their methodology was basically taking the land value of all these exempt entities and taxing them at the usage of the property. For instance, if it's, if you're talking Lawrence General Hospital, as you mentioned, the full valuation is 70 million, but the land value is roughly 20 million. You would take the $20 million, because basically Lawrence General Hospital can take that building and build anywhere they want in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but they can't take the land with them. So the land is the city's, so we put a value on that land and multiply it by the classification code, so which would be a commercial entity, so it'd be the 20 million times the commercial tax rate. That would be the proposed tax bills that we would ask Lawrence General Hospital, I keep using their name, it's thrown out there.
As an example.
As an example.
Right.
I'll throw the Lawrence Boys Club out there. I'm from there. And we would ask them to pay this amount, and, in a word document, simple letter, it's not a tax bill, up to this amount, and payable as of a certain date, say, May 1st. And if they're willing to contribute, that's great. If they can do the whole thing, that's even better. If they can do a portion, if they can do one fiscal year and not the next for whatever reasons, but every year we'll end up sending these types of letters. The other methodology used, I believe, by Duxbury is taking the full and fair cash market value of all properties, multiply it by the tax rate, and the discount, or the percentage that the city is looking to acquire for tax purposes, is the amount of monies that the city uses for police and fire. So whatever your budget is for police and fire, I believe the city allowance is in the 27 percentile of the full budget of the city. So they would multiply that tax bill by the 27%, and that's the monies that they're looking to obtain from these exempt entities. And you can use any formula that the council, it's to your purview, and it's up to the purview of the taxpayer that's exempt to pay. You can use whatever methodology. We would like to start with a foundation, which is the assessment of all properties. The assessors are responsible for valuing each property every year, and that's a solid number that's reported and certified by the state. That's going to be our basis. Whatever formula you decide, you have several tax rates, several I mean, you have the residential tax rate, if it's a residential property, for instance, that's a housing, affordable units for mental health patients, we have several of those, you would tax them at the commercial rate. Commercial properties at the commercial rate. You also have a single rate. Before the council adopts a split rate, we have a uniform rate, you can tax them at that rate, just to be consistent. So there are several varieties out there. You can even start a pilot on a one-on-one basis. Lawrence General Hospital might say, I don't believe in your land value, we think it's a different number. You want to argue that in court? They can. You can sit down with them on a one-to-one basis and figure out what they can afford. This is our formula, this is what we think you can pay, and I think the range you and I discussed was from $50,000, using the methodology of the land value, times the commercial rate, compared to the full and fair cash market value, times the 25% of the police and fire services, that bill is $511,000. It's a huge range. Lawrence General Hospital might just say, I'll settle for the 50, but I think we'll leave in money on the table, if they decide to do this. We go for the, you know, we shoot for the stars and go for the $511,000, they'll say, I'll meet you in the middle. And we'll just sign a pilot with them, to guarantee those funds, so that we can use it in the general fund for future years. So we don't want this one-time commitment, say, with this top 10 exempt entities, we would want a commitment with them, in the letter, signed by the council, the mayor, and the CEO and CFO of these institutions, so.
So I'm going to let you know where I would like this to go, and I'll open up to any questions anybody may have. Ultimately, what I would like to see happen is for us to get to a point where we're comfortable with the request, we're comfortable with the ratio, with the formula that we want to make and ask. And I would certainly make the ask to all the, these groups right here that are on this list. And again, it's an ask. We cannot force, we cannot demand, it is only an ask. Nothing ventured, nothing gained. And if we get this committee to support it, that's fantastic, and maybe we bring it to the full council. If we can get the full council to support it, even better. But I, I know that I'm, that I'm supporting this, and I just wanted to kind of get a gauge as, from you, from the membership, as to where you stand on this. Is this something you want to pursue? Do you want to be, have this to be tweaked? I'm willing to listen. But at the bottom line here is, I'd like to be able to ask these individual organizations, many of them are excellent, to see what they can do to provide, to our city, some financial assistance to provide the services that many of our residents rely on, so. Open up to questions, comments, questions perhaps? Mr. Abdi?
So, I'm familiar with pilots, and familiar with how they work in other communities, Mr. Chairman. How would you propose, or what would you propose? How would this be rolled out? Would it be one or two, one or two nonprofits? Would it be across the board? And who would engage them, either to you or Mr. Vega?
I'll start from the beginning, Bill. In the beginning? It's an attempt at humor. How would we propose this be executed? Would it be Mr. Vega's office? Would it be executive branch? How would, how would this look? How would it feel? How would we approach negotiating with nonprofits? So let me take a stab at that. So this is my recommendation, to be fair, is to not to make a cut, frankly, to the biggest, to the smallest, and everything in between, because everybody has a variety of abilities to pay. Some might be able to, some might not. And if you're, and if you're on the might-not side, that's fine, no one's forcing you to. Who would roll it out? It would be essentially a, depending on how many individuals, if it's, if it's just me alone doing it, I'll send it out. If we end up people from the committee, we gather the committee, send it out. If we have the full council, we have a vote on the council, we'll have a vote of the city council, the council can do that. So wherever this takes, wherever, whoever wants to be a part of this, I invite them to be a part of this. If somebody decides they don't want to be a part of it, that's fine too. But that's, but I'm, but I'm willing to listen. When this rolls out, there's going to be questions on it as well. At that point, this really will be turned over to the assessor's office to have the kind of give and take on the nuts and bolts, day-to-day kind of, kind of discussions, as to, how'd you get to 40,000, or 10,000, or $500, or $25, or whatever the amount is? And then the assessor's office can work with them and say, well, this is how we got to this point. Ultimately, again, I'll repeat, for the 18th time, and I'll repeat, it is voluntary. No one's required to pay.
So for the 18 times that you've mentioned it, Mr. Chair, a correspondence goes out, some sort of communication goes out, response comes back, say, for instance, it was a hospital, we won't name the hospital, and we asked them for X amount of dollars, let's say it's $50,000, and they come back and, in a very corporate way, send us a note back, say, we think highly of your plan, and here's our $500 check. How would that work? Would we take the $500 check and cash it? Or would we reject it and say, we think you can do far better than $500?
No, I don't think, Mr. Abdi, again, I'm one person here, but how I envision it, if that, if that corporate, or that entity decides to go ahead and provide a $500 check, we take the $500 check.
No pushback, no?
Again, this is voluntary. I don't know how you push back on something. We have no leverage to push back. I don't, how do you, I'm not sure how you, you say, we're not accepting that, we want you to put another zero at the end of that, and make it, you know, 50,000. I don't know how we, I don't know how, where we stand, and where we can demand that. We could certainly ask. We could say, is that all you can do? Can you do a little bit more? I guess you can ask that question. And they said, no, that's the best we can do. Okay, well, that's the best you can do.
So let me be clear, Mr. Chair. I support your initiative, I support the effort. I, as one individual, do believe there are nonprofits that are far more profitable than they let on. All you have to do is go to the Secretary of State's office and look at what they pay their, their executives, and all their expenses are to be seen right there, right out there in the public. And then there's others that, I think we would all agree, do yeoman's work in this city and in this state and country, and their executives don't make money, and, you know, there's, they're, they're hand-to-mouth, if you will, as far as the nonprofit goes, and nothing would, would probably be a reasonable expectation, and most people, most reasonable people would say, that makes sense. I just, if we were to move forward with a program like this, I for one, and it's not a form of question, Mr. Chair, I would just state that I would want to see it be, because there are able, there are able organizations in the city that provide a lot to the city, but also take a lot of services from this city, that I don't think it's necessarily an even trade. And therefore, I'd like to see this be successful. And I'll just stop, I could talk about it forever, but I won't.
And I will thank you, Mr. Abdi, and I will also, there's a sample letter here to give you a flavor as to the tone, to give you a flavor as to what kind of letter we would send out. I actually drafted, I, I put this together. This certainly can be changed in multiple ways, but I thought this was a way to acknowledge what nonprofits do in our city, acknowledges the fact that we have a lot of things that we have to pay for, services, and it is an ask, and it talks in detail about how to pay for that, or if they have any questions, that's all in the sample letter. Any other comments or questions by anyone? Mr. Vasquez?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Thank you for taking the initiative on this. This is actually extremely important, and it will be good for the city of Florence. I do have some questions, however, as to, some of them will be directed to probably Mr. Vega, some potentially to Ms. Aronello, and some to you. First to Mr. Vega. In the list that we've received, we have approximately 70 to 75 nonprofits that are listed. Is it because we're only listing nonprofits that own land in the city?
Correct.
But there are some that I know off the top of my head that own properties here, such as Northern Access, which is big. I know that they're in, you know, education, but it's not listed here. There are some churches that I also belong to, that they own the property?
Yep. So when I generated this report, it comes out of the appraisal software, Vision, it's 13,500 a piece of real estate in the city. They're all coded out. So when I coded out state-owned, it must have dropped Northern Essex. But when we do fine-tune this, we will be picking up these accounts.
Okay.
So it's a, it's an Excel spreadsheet, done fairly quickly, and we will be looking at every single one of these. Neco is definitely in my radar.
And I think that's, that's good clarification, because I know that we have hundreds, if not close to 8,000 or more, nonprofits within the limits of our, of our city. But I also know that many of them probably rent space from
Landlords.
Landlords, and, you know, private business owners, and so they will be disqualified.
They, the owner already pays
Already paying taxes.
Taxes. And they do come in the office saying, hey, I lease to the YW, they're exempt, I should be exempt too, and that's not the way the law is written.
Okay. For one second, Council President, you mentioned Northern Essex. Northern Essex not on this list, because it is a government institution. So those are omitted from this list that was given to us.
Okay. No, thank you. Next, when you brought up the land value versus the physical building of the property, the, what we see. So anytime we request funds, it will be based on the value of the land, not of the structure?
We, we haven't determined that, but that was one of the options of how we would roll this program out, whether you choose the option, call it A, to use the land value times whatever the code, the classification code for commercial or residential would be. Or option B would be the full and fair cash market value, times the proper tax rate, and the percentage that it costs the city for police and fire services. So whichever option this council and the mayor approves, then that's the way we'll roll it out.
Okay.
I just separated the land value, that was one of the methodologies, and then I put the full and fair cash market value, that was the other methodology.
Now, to you, Mr. Chair. In terms of the, the acceptance of funds, are we looking specifically for a monetary payment and/or a service payment? Let's say, for instance, if a hospital were to say, I am willing to keep up, you know, the landscaping in my surrounding, at no cost to the city, so not, not the physical structure that they own, but outside of it. Let's say, for instance, General Hospital, right in front of it, there's a, you know, a small parcel that is vacant, you have the entrance via Marston Street. So if they were to say, we will keep up with the landscaping in that area, up to this amount of money, is that something that we should consider, or have you thought of that?
I gave it, thank you, I gave it a little bit of thought. I want to flip the question over to Mr. Vega, who has a better idea throughout, he's done a little more research around the Commonwealth, and ask him that question. Have you seen that in, in your research of what the Council President was suggesting?
These funds would go to the general fund.
Okay. That was my next question. Where would the funds go?
Yep. They'd go to the general fund. We can set up a, I'll let Mark talk about this, set up a special charge code, so we know what's coming in. We have the reporter in our recap, probably as non-recurring revenue, page three. If a certain entity wants to give a contribution, and specify what they want to do with that, what the city wants to do with those monies, that's a totally different program, and they would have to come in and probably ask the council to accept a donation or some sort. I'm not familiar with that side of it.
I think you're getting ahead of me here. Because I had, I had two things. One is, so if it goes back to the general fund, is it going to be considered part of the operating revenue for that particular fiscal year? So let's, let's assume that, you know, we're about to enter fiscal 2018, you know, July 10th, we received a, a check from the general, Lawrence General Hospital, on the amount listed here in the letter. Is that going to be part of our operating revenue?
It would, it would come in, all funds come to the general fund unless they're designated as some other grant or something else. So it would come into the general fund, but it isn't part of our operating budget, because we haven't factored it in to our FY '18 budget. I didn't, I don't have a payment in lieu of tax program in there. So if we were to receive these funds, that could be a supplemental budget submitted, and then it would become part of our operating budget, we'd spend the money. But right now, it would just come in as revenues to help with next year.
So in other words, it will be considered part of what we call free cash, at that point?
It would end up in free cash if it's not, a supplemental budget isn't prepared to spend it, it'll end up in free cash at the end of FY '18.
Okay. Now, for the acceptance of funds, I know we've had some private businesses actually donated funds to the city of Florence, such as Fiesta Show, I believe about, you know, three, four weeks ago, we accepted a donation on the amount of roughly $8,000, $9,000. The, does the city, will the city council be required to accept the funds before they enter the operating budget?
The, we have departments, there's a few tonight, for grants, grants and donations, department heads can accept those, they just need to come to the council if they want to spend any of those grants or donations. Donations of cash and/or property needs to come to the council. Somebody wants to donate a painting to us, even though it's not spending it, we need the council's approval to accept that donation. But by and large, the purpose of the donation, there's often strings attached when there's a donation, and the purpose is, we may not want to accept a donation from, from somebody to, that says it has to be spent on something the city's not interested in doing. Yeah, I can't think of it off the top of my head, but some illegal activity, for example, we wouldn't accept that donation. But by and large, we have to accept the donation and then spend it in accordance with the donor's wishes.
In this case, since we've been talking about the hospital, let's continue with the hospital. On July 10th, they still send a check, and they say it has to be related to health activities within the city, only. It's a donation, we're asking for a pilot tax payment that I require.
Yeah.
But when the, it comes with, with an attachment that says, it can only be spent for these purposes.
Then, yeah, that would, that would be, then they would be making a donation of which they'd, which would not be a payment in lieu of tax program.
But my concern here, and will be, that if we open that Will be that if we open that we are also allowing every nonprofit to potentially attach something saying it can only be spent for X and Y.
Right.
So I I will prefer that is that we don't allow that to to bring so you know restrictions to it because if we allow every single nonprofit that you know if the program is successful when the program I'm not going to say if but when the program is successful um if we allow every nonprofit to put restrictions as to how the money should we spend it might defeat the purpose of us actually asking for the donation.
So maybe we can ask that they suggest it but we're not held
Required.
That maybe there's some language in that that we could put in there.
Yeah something to consider um okay I don't have any any further questions at this point um if I do you know I'll come back to it thank you Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Thank you Mr. Arnelo thank you Mr. Vega.
One last piece of information I think that would be helpful just to kind of tie this up is that we currently already receive payment in lieu of tax taxes from at least one maybe several organizations Mr. Vega can you just talk to us a little bit about that who we're getting it from and how much we're receiving?
Certainly.
Do you have that?
Uh on a yearly basis there are two programs that I can identify that report to the assessors' office and that is um the 121A projects it's the affordable housing projects that uh was in agreement with the Lawrence City Council and the mayor forty years ago um so for instance you have Rita Hall Allen's Park Associates Vellbrook Mary McAuley all three units and Common Street Associations these are affordable housing units with a contract of forty years and they pay a pilot program payment lieu of taxes they're not on the tax roll um their formula is basically the gross amount of income times the tax rate of ten dollars that's set by the state so they in turn pay the state and the state reimburses the city on a yearly basis so in FY17 and uh one two three four five six pilot programs we um these institutions paid the city three hundred and forty thousand dollars and paid the state three hundred uh FY16 three hundred forty thousand and three hundred eighty one thousand to the state FY17 um same institutions paid three hundred and fifty one thousand to the state uh to the city and three hundred and eighty five thousand to the state um these programs are are maturing and and you'll see in the next actually next year next fiscal year 2019 uh one of the uh units will be um on the tax roll uh so they'll no longer be in the pilot and um they'll receive a tax bill from the city and the formula is going to be similar but the tax rate is going to be the residential tax rate which is higher than the the ten dollars that you see. The other program is the Lawrence Housing Authority they also pay a pilot um I believe I have it here um so the pilot with the Lawrence Housing Authority for FY17 uh which they made a payment on February third 2017 in the amount of two hundred and fifty eight thousand three hundred sixty dollars and forty cents um and they they range or the average payment that they make is about two hundred and thirty five thousand dollars.
And how do you get I'm trying to I'm trying now I'm trying to cultivate what the proper formula is how did you get that to with the Lawrence Housing Authority?
That one is a very complex formula uh it's nothing that the city gets their hands on it's done by their auditors
Okay.
Uh and I believe the they might or have to take into consideration the net operating income less expensive to come up with a gross amount and the the end result would be a tax rate that um I haven't put my hands around again it's they submit the the funds directly to the treasurer's office as the assessors' responsibilities we do track these that particular one although all the other ones the 121As fall uh the responsibility is the assessors' office LHA is the treasurer's office they pay directly to the treasurer so I can get you that formula that's not a problem.
Okay so back to the options again and we're let's see if you got more questions and we're gonna I think move on soon so option one is if if we're going to make a request option one is to determine the assessed land value multiplying it by the corresponding tax rate that's one so we figure how much assessed land is worth and then wherever they are that tax rate that's very simple another option would be multiplying the land value by the uh single rate this year is nineteen dollars and nineteen cents um and the current splits are and here's what I understand residential rate is fifteen dollars and thirty four cent and the commercial rate of thirty-three fifty-nine in that particular option what what are we taxing them at nineteen dollars and nineteen cents?
Yeah option two.
Thirteen or thirty-three which one?
Option two would be the single rate.
Single rate which is the nineteen?
Nineteen nineteen.
So I should ignore the rest of the
Yeah.
Okay and the third option is to determine the full and fair market value of the property multiplying it by the corresponding tax rate and discounting seventy-five percent of the tax bill.
Which leaves you the twenty-five percent that is um the expenses uh for police uh public service police fire DPW
Okay.
And I think it makes up a range I just used the twenty-five percent but it ranges this year about twenty-seven percent every year would be a different amount but you get where we're trying to close the gap.
So looking at this one the one one example we've been talking about all night if we deal with it on the first one I think that's where we're getting to the forty-nine six seventy-three option one I don't know what the option two amount is probably somewhere between that and option three would be five hundred and eleven thousand dollars which is a considerable jump so you're going from fifty thousand to five hundred and eleven and I'm guessing option two is somewhere in between.
Yep and
And again this is just an ask right so
Yep uh so it's uh around the seventy thousand dollar range just to note Andover has a pilot program with Phillips Academy
Mm-hmm.
The valuation of Phillips and Lawrence General Hospital is pretty similar tax rates pretty similar with Lawrence and Andover not too much not too far off and their contribution is two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. In 2017 it'll be raised by seventy thousand dollars and they would be paying three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. So just to give you an idea that's the only one the assessors and and Andover are tracking.
Right so I so those are the options I um I don't have a strong opinion uh at this point because from my perspective anything that we bring in now is something we've we haven't brought in at all.
I agree.
So it's almost as if we are in a much better spot um we certainly can I I don't know does anybody have any opinions as to I really don't have a strong opinion on this does anybody have an opinion as to which option if we were going to go forward with this they would endorse?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Abdu.
I don't believe that this evening I would endorse any of these without um seeing them played out um first of all having them laid out and showing some examples of um the value I because I didn't have the materials the rates presented this evening other than what you said verbally and for instance on the split rate I'm not as familiar as you and Mr. Vega are so um either on a recess or between meetings I'd want to see that. I also have other questions when the time is right.
Okay did you I mean we certainly can table this here do you have a thought now or did you are you leaning somewhere because we're probably going to get that information?
Yeah no similar I know that I've I've spoken with Mr. Vega a lot about rates and whatnot in the past so I'm somewhat familiar with the terminology but similar to Councilor Abdu I do wish to see it more detailed so that way we have
The performer.
Yeah even though I I have to agree with Councilor Plant anything that we get will be good for the city right now we're really getting nothing uh but to Councilor's Abdu concern I think if if we were to be asked by you know residents or even if we were called by any of the CEOs or CFOs from those particular nonprofits we will be able to have a much better understanding as to how the formulas are going to work and and what they they should expect in case the calls do not come to you um that could happen so I think just for us to be able to be more comfortable and versed in the in the topic I think it would be better if we were presented with uh you know some some samples of to as to how it will work I think that's what Councilor Abdu is suggesting I I will feel comfortable doing you know getting that information as well so I support the initiative there.
So just so I'm clear on the request that we can we certainly can table this here because I I I see I see we're making some progress and momentum and I want to make sure we're comfortable so what you're looking for are you looking for a total number broken down right now there is uh what do we say twelve thirteen
Ninety-two.
Thirteen million dollars
Yeah ninety-two.
Assess value are you looking for the broken down that that last number broken down through these three or do you want to have the cherry pick some or do you have specifics that you want them to pull out and say option one would be this amount for this organization option two would be that that amount for that organization option three would be that amount which what would be most beneficial for you and your decision making?
Me personally I don't think that we need to go one by one but rather an example as to how it will work uh we could select you know five or six and just explain how how it will work and then from there it will be the same for the rest of the nonprofits. I don't think we will we we should request all of them at this point but rather an example to get the idea as to how it will function I could see board members calling us I am I know many board members of the different nonprofits in the city uh CEOs and CFO will likely contact us if we were to move forward and it will we will be in in a difficult situation because we wouldn't be able to respond to questions that they could bring up so I think that just an example um and even if we do it I don't know how far or comfortable you guys will feel but they don't necessarily have to be a a particular nonprofit so when they watch the meetings they don't feel that we're targeting them
Yep.
I I don't know if you guys want actual nonprofits here but we could make a fictitious fictitious one uh you know similar to to ones in other municipalities just so we could get the the idea of of how it will work um because I also wouldn't want any nonprofits to feel targeted uh in 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 particular.
I can use the city hall as an example.
Sure.
And make it easy and determine the value land building we already have those numbers.
I think that will that will work great or any other you know city properties uh that we have I think that will be helpful because that way we're using something that is tangible uh but we're not necessarily I don't want to use the word targeting but you know directing our message or picking on on a particular one.
Okay very good. Is that it Mr.?
Yeah that's it.
Okay I think we're gonna wrap up Mr. Abdu.
Thank you Mr. Chair um yes to confirm what President Vasquez had suggested we don't need to use any of these specifics examples I just I actually want to see it more from a formulary standpoint as to how each one of the three options plays out
Mm-hmm.
With the same product city hall is a good example give it a fict give it a fictitious dollar amount and then play it out over the three options and see what it yields and um you know maybe maybe do two or three opt three fictitious options a large one which could be your largest nonprofit and then a small one the mom and pop right?
Mm-hmm.
Um and to see how each one of the formulas performs and that way when we look at it we'd be able to look at these you know in one case you look at the tax rate in one case you look at the 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 single rate and um kind of get a more of a feel for what this would mean um so that's that regarding that and I I would I would um yield until a later moment when I can ask two more questions.
I think we're done I think you know what I didn't ask now if you want Mr. Abdu.
Thank you Mr. Chairman um I this 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 initiative is something I support um the concept is is ripe um I have two questions one specific to um had it earlier and I believe President Vasquez was basically saying the same thing regarding he suggested what if someone took care of the grass in front of their property or city lands um I know in the past my involvement with um another nonprofit a baseball league um we offered to do such things for the city and it's not something you no good deed goes unpunished and you can't just get a lawnmower and start cutting city property without um bargaining or or communicating um that would be a piece that we would have to negotiate would that be correct do you Mr. Chair Mr. Vega or Mr. I know I know it's really not appropriate for either one of you it's more of a
Legal.
City attorney or
Yeah the city attorney.
Or possibly the tax collector's office but
So my knee jerk reaction on this is that there was an incident that took place earlier in one of the fields in my district where someone took it upon themselves to start mowing the lawn and damaged the field that they can't be used anymore uh we just don't want anybody to be dealing with doing that stuff we want to make sure it's done right this is city property um you know as long as the people got you know proper training and doing it we don't need to make it worse than what their best of intentions are so we I think we just need to be careful I'm not saying that we can't do it but if you moved your if you moved your hypothetical to a different place what happens if one of these institutions says you know something we're gonna offer six more scholarships to Lawrence students at the value of I don't know it's it's maybe this tuition is twelve thousand a year and maybe you have six at seventy-two thousand maybe we do that to benefit Lawrence is that gonna you know it doesn't benefit the city coffers it benefits the city residents potentially or some city residents especially those who've got kids that are maybe going or in school or or about to so you know it's do you negotiate that stuff I mean who's gonna say no to you want to offer scholarships yeah why not that's a great idea um how does that help the bottom line I don't know.
So that that took my question off track where it was more it was no it was okay it was more specific to tangible hard donation of in-kind contribution non monetary cutting grass painting something improving a city asset that would theoretically take away um I'm not gonna mince words I mean it's obvious it's gonna take away jobs from a DPW worker I'm sure the SEIU would like to have a conversation about that even though it's I I'm sure all parties would agree it's good the city's receiving a donation of an in-kind service um which allows us to you know redirect resources to another service um but it's just not something we can just jump into I'm sure that the SEIU in in the case that they represent I believe the what would be the affected public workers um would probably want to have a conversation about that.
Mm-hmm.
So that would obviously be a one-off taking off an example you provided um which I I would support that but who would so who would be the project manager Mr. Chair would it would it be the assessors' office would it be who would it be who would as we get into the nitty gritty
Mm-hmm.
Who's going to be the project manager?
For the entire project as a whole or
Assuming that each one of these will be you know each one of these will be its own because we don't know what kind of response the city will get we don't know what kind of generosity nonprofits
Correct.
Have the ability to provide um some will be simple it'll be a small check and it'll be the best they can do and we should be appreciative or maybe we would challenge that they could do better next year um but there may be that complex possible contribution of an in-kind donation whether
Mm-hmm.
Some sort of physical contribution versus a monetary contribution that we would have to investigate um beyond legal liability um again it'd be like a project project management.
I'll take a cut at that if you don't mind I'll take a real quick
Sure.
Quick cut which is we would deal with it in any other way than any organizations I want to cut the lawn I want to do cleanup I want to do X Y and Z I don't think we if that's what they want to do we would treat it in no different matter they're not doing a payment all due to tax program as Mr. I know so this is something completely different this is not a a pilot pilot is money coming in into the city what you're suggesting is something similar so they say oh we can't put in you know five thousand dollars but we will do X Y and Z well that's fine if we want to do X Y and Z depends on what the X Y and Z is it cutting lawns well let me hook you up with a DPW director and you can work with that individual as to when where and all that stuff if it's something I don't know whatever it is in the department that it's something, I don't know, whatever it is in the department that has jurisdiction over that issue would work directly. I don't see how the assessor gets involved. He's a money guy, budget, money guy. It would be dealing with whatever the subject matter is with the department.
And, and the monies can get funneled through the assessor's office. We can create a charge code. We can track them in an Excel spreadsheet, hand the monies over to the treasurer's office, uh, create a cash receipt, whatever the case may be. Uh, wouldn't be incumbent upon the city councilors to handle anything like this. When it comes to other items, car, professional services.
Land.
They should just come right, directly to the city council and request, um, your permission as it, as it's been done in the past. We have accepted, the assessor's office have, uh, accepted one-time donations. For instance, the hydro generating plant was a pilot many, many years ago. I believe in two thousand and five, the state mandated, mandated the assessors to put them on the tax roll. When we did that, um, they donated one hundred thousand dollars to the city of Lawrence in a check. We didn't expect it. We didn't know it was coming and handed it over to the board of assessors. We filed it, handed it over to the treasurer's office. She created an org, uh, organization and, um, and posted it to the general fund. Because we didn't know what to do with it. Treasurer's office was a one-time thing. They didn't know what to do with it. We have dealt with this in the past. But as far as items, I would funnel it back to the city council or the mayor.
Well, in the interest of time, and we have a lot, I didn't know, we were taking this up tonight, we have other items. I, I have a lot of questions. Do you, Mr. Chair? And it would be, um, you know, it's, it's not going, it's not going to be a simple program. Um, and I know resources are, are limited in the city hall and, um, the city council is not a, uh, the city council is not a managing branch of government. And, um, I just don't know. I have a lot of questions I can ask the two of you offline, um, but not with us all together, individual questions. So, um, I will, I will not, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
So why don't we do this? Um, I'll entertain a motion at table. And, and Mr. Vega, you underst, you, I get it, just to what the committee is looking for as far as comments. And we can take this up at our next meeting. Is that enough time? Probably in a couple of weeks, something like that? Would that give you enough time?
Uh, sure.
To do whatever the committee's just requested, or is that too?
I'll be on vacation, uh, next couple of weeks.
All right. So, um, I guess we'll keep in touch. We'll figure out when the best time is and then when it is, um, make sure, what I'd like to do is, part of this is my fault. So we'll try to get more information out as quickly as possible to the membership so that they're better prepared, um, ahead of time.
I can probably have something for you tomorrow.
That's great. Thank you so much for your assistance on this. Is there a motion at table?
So move.
Motion made.
Second.
And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's have it. Thank you. Let's go through the items that are really quick. Uh, what are the quick ones here? Is the, uh?
Thirty-four thousand. Actually, uh, two forty-five seventeen.
Is there a motion to take two forty-five seventeen off, uh, the new business?
So move.
Motion made.
Second.
And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's have it. Mr. Vargas, acceptance of donation for movie screenings.
Good evening, councilors. Uh, six ten Havil Street, Lawrence, Mass.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Vargas. Can you just tell us this is about a little bit?
Yeah, so as, as many of you know, we've, um, over the past year, we've had the fortune, the fortune of having some movies being filmed in the city. Every time folks come in, I, I engage and interact with them and they, we negotiate a payment to the city, um, that they make on behalf of, or for the fact that they're, they're here, um, using our resources. And over the past year, I've been able to accumulate sixty-two thousand, six hundred dollars worth of funds coming into the city, uh, for the purposes of using, um, using it, uh, for the screenings.
Any questions in the committee? Is there a motion to send this document up for the accepting the sum of sixty-two, sixty-two thousand, six hundred dollars for filling revenue in the city of Lawrence? Is there a motion to send this up in favorable recommendation?
So move.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Next item. Uh, what's, what's the, two fifty, municipal vulnerability preparedness program grant?
Motion to take document two fifty seventeen out of, out of order.
Motion made.
Second.
And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. This is the municipal vulnerability preparedness program grant for thirty-four thousand dollars. It was introduced to the city council by Frank O'Connor Jr., the economic development project officer. Welcome, Mr. O'Connor.
Hi, good evening, councilors. Thank you very much for your time. Frank O'Connor with the Office of Planning and Development.
Uh, could you tell us a little bit about this, um, grant?
Yes, sir. Uh, the city, um, submitted a application and was fortunate enough to receive thirty-four thousand dollars, uh, to complete a community resiliency planning process, uh, working with the state. The state has identified a process to have written procedures done to deal with certain vulnerabilities that may be caused by natural disasters such as blizzards or flooding and how those weather conditions or weather events might adversely affect infrastructure or public buildings and neighborhoods. Uh, having a written plan in place often facilitates quicker rebounding from the adverse impact of those events that were deemed vulnerable.
Any questions by member of the committee? Is there a motion to, no, Mr. Mr. Vasquez?
Um, Mr. O'Connor, are there any matching funds from the city?
No, sir. No, nothing is required. Uh, it's a two-step process, but, uh, the city is not on the hook for any matching funds.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Is there a motion?
Motion to send up to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And second, in discussion. Here we go, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Will you please come back on the eleventh? Will you please come back on the eleventh?
I will not be available on the eleventh. Um, forgive me, I, um, have a family commitment at that time.
That's fine. As long as someone is here around the eleventh, that'd be able to help answer any questions by the council, that, that'd be fine.
Of course, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Enjoy. Uh, okay. Forty R, who'll deal with that next? Take two forty-four seventeen?
So move.
Motion made.
Second.
And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. This is the Office of Planning and Development's chapter forty R Smart Growth Housing Incentive Housing Bonus for a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. And this was brought on the city council agenda by Dan McCarthy, the land use planner. Good evening, Mr. McCarthy.
Uh, good evening, council plant and other councilors. Uh, Daniel McCarthy with a, a land use plan with the city of Lawrence. Uh, my office at two twenty-five Essex Street. And I'm here tonight, um, uh, looking for the city to accept and authorize, um, the, um, expenditures of a group, of a grant funds through the Department of Housing and Community Development. Um, these are what are called incentive bonuses as a result of the city's participation in the forty R smart, smart growth program. The funds that are coming to the city are based on a number of houses that have been permitted through this process. And this is a award. Um, um, there is no match to this. This is a, this, these funds come to the city free of, um, criteria. We could put this money right in the general fund. The, the mayor has, uh, asked that some of this money be expended towards two programs that he thinks are related in some, in, 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 in good part to this program. The housing that was permitted is at the, um, Malden Mills Smart Growth Overlay District. It was sixty-two units of new affordable housing done by Wynn Properties. And we received a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. We received three thousand dollars for every unit of housing that we permitted. Um, the, the, we would like to see some of the money earmarked for a home buyers program and some of the money to be earmarked for a, um, the, um, money to be spent on the rail trail, which goes up by the Malden Mills. And we think it would be a, a benefit to the, um, neighbors and the community in that neighborhood. So these are two programs that we're gonna be spending on. Part of my discussions with, in the in-house in the planning office was, um, to have these, these funds when they come in, to have them set up for accounts and be paid down. But as I said, this, this, these are, this is an incentive bonus more than a grant. And it comes to the city free of strings. So we're just asking that these monies be accepted.
Okay. Any discussions or a motion? Questions, Mr. Chair? Mr. Abdu?
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy, thank you. Um, when we accept, uh, large dollar amounts like this for forty hour housing, we assume it's happened in the past?
Yes.
With Union Crossing and other type of developments?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Do we, do we look at the, the, the population demographics that are, that's a big number, sixty-two, and there's other developments in large buckets? Do we look at the services? You know, there's been conversation recently about, um, the stress on the school system. Do we ever look at that and say, uh, this amount of units had this amount of children and perhaps certain monies need to go to the schools? Do we, do we ever, do we look critically at when we're building the housing stock, what that housing stock is being filled with and what kind of services those people might need, whether it's schools, whether it's fire in a certain, like, um, Malden Mills, yeah, using that as an example, you have Engine Seven right there on Park Street. But do we ever look at things like that? I, and I, I don't, I'm not being fresh, I'm just asking.
We, we have not.
Do we look at?
We have not done an analysis of that, no. On a cost benefit analysis of the, of the housing compared to what the brings into the community and what it does. Uh, it, uh, they do pay taxes. These are not, uh, non, these are non nonprofits. Um, the, they pay regular, um, property taxes, just like every other market rate development would. The, um, the program, the forty R program in the Department of Housing and Development actually sends us a letter every year, um, because as part of the program, we could also qualify for forty S, which is, uh, supports school departments. As a result of this, it's mitigation money for creating housing. We don't qualify for that because of the, we don't put any of our general funds go to the school. We, so if we did, if we do get to the point where we are, um, paying for the schools from our taxes, then we could qualify for the forty S program as well. And that would be an increase in funds, just like we're doing today.
Do you, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy, for that response, the answer. Um, so, yeah, that, that's the only thing I would look at as we move forward. Obviously, always going to vote yes to accept grant monies. I, I'm sure this is going to be an exception one day, but, um, but when we in turn say that, um, we'll direct that money towards a rail trail, or we'll direct that money towards a widget, or, you know, whatever you, do we ever stop and look at, say, okay, over the last X amount of years, we've taken this much money in, but we've also built a population of schoolchildren of, um, you know, or it could be in an area where there needs to be more fire service. Just before we jump and spend the sixty-two thousand in this case, uh, am I right? The, no, excuse me, the hundred and eighty-six thousand. I love rail trails, um, but I'm just saying, do we ever look at, um, deferring some of the costs that we may be incurring by taking on that housing stock? You don't need to answer because you already have. That, that's my only point, is that, um, there's some critical services that the city, we struggle with, and that's public safety, education, and those type of things. And, um, they're not as sexy to direct money towards, but, um, I would just suggest maybe we should do a cost benefit analysis, either every year, every other year, and kind of take a look at the monies we've accepted, where we've directed that money, and then the rest of the budget. That is all.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Any other comments, questions? So I'm just reading one of the recitals. It says here, the general intent of improving municipal infrastructure. When I think of municipal infrastructure, I think of roads, bridges, sidewalks. I think of parks. I think of things like that. And it goes on. And other capital improvements, capital improvements necessitated by the development of the new housing. So if there's more people there, or any better roads, better parks, better, all that stuff. Housing, uh, development of new housing, including but not limited to improvements of the Lawrence rail trail. Okay, I guess. And the city of Lawrence first time home buyers program. It's not really a capital improvement. It's not doing anything with sidewalks or roads or?
That might be, that might be misleading. The, this is the last year that the, um, the incentive bonuses will be, you know, in the, in the form of, um, straight cash that the city can use for whatever. Going forward, all the money has to be, will be in, in capital improvement credits that we'll have to use for our infrastructure, for capital improvements, mitigation, in other words, uh, that you're describing. Um, but, but up until this program, since two thousand and six up until this year, the incentive bonus has been just strictly a cash payment to the city to use, if you use any, in any manner they deem fit. It's, um, it's more or less, uh, part of the general fund. And it could have been just put right into the general fund. Um, but I think the, it was the, uh, the mayor's wish that some of this money be expended towards things that we think are a positive, um, development. And the rail trail, we have a lot of money that's going into the development. We've got a lease on that. And we've got, um, a lot of programs that are, that are connected to that. So the thought was that some of this money could be used to, for capital improvements along that area. Um, this rail trail connects, um, schools, um, neighborhoods, um, parks, um, ballfields. Um, the, we think it's a, it runs adjacent to the West Street. It's gonna be away from the children who go to, attend a charter school, to walk to the park without having to watch, walking down West Street every day to go play baseball. Um, it'll be away from people to bicycle. It'll connect up to the, it also connects up to the Spigot River Trail and to the Methuen Rail Trail. And you can take it all the way up to Derry, New Hampshire, um, as it is now. So we think it is a big improvement. We think it's a, a, a great benefit to the people in the city, especially the people in the southern tower, of Lower Tower Hill. Um, I think it's amenity. And, uh, we think it's also, uh, it's addition by subtraction, is it's getting rid of a blighted area that's been a, a breeding ground for a lot of criminal activity and, and traction for, um, some of the bad element in the city.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Is there a motion?
Motion to send up to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion made.
Second.
And second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you.
Will you be present at the eleventh?
I will.
Thank you. We'll see you then.
Thank you.
Now for the main event, the capital improvement plan. This is document, uh, number two thirty-four two seventeen, to propose five-year capital improvement for FY two thousand and eighteen through FY two thousand and twenty-two, uh, submitted to the city council by Mayor Dan Rivera and Overseer Sean Cronin. And I welcome Mr. Rynello again. Good evening, Mr. Rynello.
Good evening, councilors. Um, so in your package should be the entire capital improvement plan for FY eighteen to FY twenty-two. Um, it's a, it's a bound, uh, uh, product. Uh, I'm gonna, um, just, I, I think we should just appoint you to the table of contents of what's involved in this, um, capital improvement plan.
Can I stop you right there for one second, Mr. Rynello? Is there a motion for a two-minute recess?
Motion for two-minute recess?
Motion made. And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Second. And second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. I'm sorry, Mr. Rynello, I, proceed.
No problem. Okay, as long as everybody's got a copy. And for those at home, this is on the website under the Budget Finance Office.
Please address the council, Ms. Rynello.
What's that?
Please address the city council.
Okay.
Our plane to the audience at home.
And, um, so I'd like to just bring your attention to the table of contents page, because that kind of gives up if, what's included in this report. So on page four is the overview, so I'd like to start there. And on page, you know, there's an introduction on page three. The overview on page four, under the CIP overview on the bottom of page four, kind of summarizes in brief, uh, what we did here. This plan has approximately one hundred and thirty-nine point seven million over seventy capital projects ranging in size of twenty thousand plus. Twenty thousand is our litmus test to include in the capital improvement plan. And then down below, we just indicate how that hundred and thirty-nine point seven million is split up, and it's roughly fifty-one million in general funded debt, three million in Pago capital projects, and six hundred thousand supported by the airport enterprise. In addition, um, we plan on, the plan, uh, this plan includes eighty-four and a half million of grants, so out of that hundred and thirty-nine point seven, eighty-four point five million will be funded through grants. And primarily, that's the MSBA grants for the, uh, school projects. There are two new school projects in here, estimated at, although they're estimated to come in at eighty percent, funding by the MSBA, and our projections, we only use seventy percent, figuring ten percent, uh, of unallowable expenses that the, uh, MSBA may not, um, reimburse us for, which is fairly typical with all the MSBA projects, that you don't get a hundred percent funding. So then, uh, so that's just a brief overview of what's in here, and I thought I would just get to the crux of the report, which begins on, uh, on page eighteen as to what the process was, and then, uh, a brief description of what's in here. So on page eighteen is the, uh, project requests. There were several hundred project requests totaling roughly a quarter billion dollars. Uh, not all of those got funded. And the, the projects that are, that included this number on the following page, at the top of page nineteen. And so what I have here, the general funded debt, the pay-as-you-go debt by, uh, by activity or a large department, uh, how much is going to be handled by the enterprise funds, uh, how much is going to be handled through a chapter ninety program. Uh, MSBA eligible programs are sixty-six million. Uh, other state and federal programs are another eleven point seven million. And then the total of all funding source is a hundred and ninety-two million. And then there were fifty-four million worth of projects, uh, not funded in this cycle. That's how we came up with the roughly two hundred and fifty million worth of project requests. To continue on, uh, there's a brief description on the bottom of page nineteen as what are our resources, how are we going to pay for all that, uh, all these capital improvements? And, um, uh, what we have built into our operating budget and our financial forecast, we have a five-year financial forecast, which kind of goes along, along with this, uh, in our budget techniques, is that, uh, right now, our debt to, uh, net revenues, general fund debt to net revenues is approximately six, six percent. Uh, and going forward, uh, our, our projections and our capital improvement plan, plans on getting that number to, uh, rising from six percent to seven percent over a five-year period. So the, um, at the bottom of page of nineteen, we're kind of just generally discussing that, uh, how we came up with the, uh, how are we going to fund this plan? And it does require an increase in, uh, in commitment of our operating budget, but we're going to do it slowly over the next few years to get to a benchmark of seven percent. So by the year two thousand and twenty-one, uh, two thousand and twenty-two will be at the seven percent number. So that's a continuing our discussion on the top of page twenty. And on the top of page twenty, you'll see, uh, what that annual capital investment, additional capital investment means. And, uh, the way we're going to meet that, uh, seven percent threshold, we're gonna, uh, as the table indicates, we're going to commit some of our new growth to debt service, and we're also, uh, the level debt number that you see, uh, at the top of, um, page twenty is, uh, the additional amount of debt service that we're not, uh, that we're adding to our operating budget to, to fund this, these, this increased capital program to get us to the seven percent threshold. So over the five-year, uh, annual capital investment, over the five years of this plan, is ten point four million dollars. So you can see it's, uh, in FY eighteen, the top year is FY eighteen at four and eighty-five thousand. Uh, next year, we'll be adding another one point one million to the operating budget, uh, and, and so on. Uh, at the bottom of page twenty is just a, a brief graph, graph that shows the, our existing debt structure. And as you can see, uh, our existing debt, um, is the, is the, uh, lowest part of the graph. It's not in color, but it's the, uh, the lowest part of the graph. And you can see the, that number kind of continues to drop, uh, quite a bit, until by two thousand and twenty-seven and twenty-eight, it's, the existing debt practically goes down to zero. Uh, so we filled the, uh, with this capital plan. You can see that we went out to, uh, with this project, we're adding, uh, the additional debt you can see as proposed debt, which is the very top numbers on all those lines on the gra, or, or columns on the graph. Uh, so I think that's a, a pretty powerful, uh, graph to show that we have quite a bit of, of debt that's, uh, that is outstanding, but it's falling. Uh, a lot of our projects are in completion, and we're, uh, we'll have some excess capacity to put to this plan. So the, on page, uh, twenty-three is the detail, are the projects that we have for the next five years in this, uh, plan. And the way we've lined it out is the same way as last year. We have, um, uh, the, the, the projects listed FY eighteen to twenty-two, um, each column. Uh, the projects are in each column from eighteen to twenty-two, and there's a total project cost. Then there's how much of that project cost is actually going to be handled through the general fund. Uh, we also have a Pago capital column. We happen to have an airport enterprise, because they had quite a bit of, um, uh, commitment to the, uh, to the airport recently. We also have a chapter ninety, which is a major, that's a annual grant funding that we receive from the state to handle our roads. Uh, and then MSBA is a major component, so we've identified which of the projects are going to be eligible for MSBA reimbursement, which, uh, we hope will be approximately eighty percent. And then there's other state and federal programs, um, uh, that, uh, that are eligible for parks and so forth, that, uh, we anticipate receiving for, for certain projects. So, uh, the entire project is listed, and then it'll show how much of that is going to be general fund or grant funded, so to give the reader an idea of what, uh, of what, uh, we're going to be coming up with. So on page, uh, you know, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five are the, is the capital, are the projects that we're going to, that have been approved. And I just wanted to just explain on page twenty-three and twenty-four is the, uh, projects that are going to be funded with debt, uh, long-term debt. We'll issue bonds. We'll be coming back to the council for that. Uh, the page twenty-five is the Pago capital projects, which will be funded out of the, uh, chapter fifty-eight reserve. We call Pago capital, and that's, uh, that's been, uh, budgeted in the general fund budget. And then we used, uh, uh, last week, we, the council voted fifty percent, was funded out of free cash and fifty percent of the operating budget. So we have approximately, uh, seven hundred and sixteen thousand worth of projects, um, um, being paid out of those funds. And then just on page twenty-six are the, um, enterprise and grant-funded projects. So those are the three components that comprise the, uh, capital improvement plan for FY eighteen. And as I, uh, on page twenty-seven, uh, through, page twenty-seven begins the description of each project, the department's description of each project. So twenty-seven through thirty-two, uh, if you, if it, for example, A-two is the, uh, Conduct Vegetation Management Plan Update with Permits and Construction. That's all you see in the, in the previous pages, but in here is a brief description, a paragraph of what that actually entails, uh, and, uh, and the total dollar amount. And, uh, that's pretty much the capital improvement plan. Uh, I, as I mentioned just a moment ago, uh, this is, uh, the, the ordinance or the charter requires the council to, uh, uh, vote on the capital improvement plan submitted by the mayor. But it's not to fund the capital improvement plan. That requires a separate action of the council, uh, which we would be, uh, we're looking for the council to approve this plan, um, uh, at the next council meeting. And then at the following council meeting, uh, we could come back to the council with specific projects and bond authorizations. Uh, not all of the projects are ready to go, so we would only be coming to the council for the projects that are ready for, um, for projects that are ready to start. So if I can, on just page twenty-three, just highlight a couple of, um, uh, highlight just a few, a few things that, uh, I wanted to point out. And, and just on, on page twenty-three is, uh, um, project DPW eighteen oh eight. It's a CIP project manager slash staff. We have a hundred and fifty thousand devoted there. It's, uh, um, it's about twelve lines down or so. But if you look for the hundred and fifty thousand, what we plan on doing is hiring a capital improvement project manager. Uh, we need a man, there's a lot of activity. Last year, we began quite a few projects. Uh, and this year, we're going to add more. And, and now that we're on a five-year capital improvement plan, we'll be doing projects every single year. We need someone devoted, uh, to manage these plans. And that salary is not going to come out of the operating budget. It'll come out of the, uh, be funded through the capital improvement program. Uh, so it doesn't impact the operating budget. And we have enough money in there for a, a project director and a support staff. Uh, that's something the DPW director was, uh, strongly, uh, strongly supportive of. Our overseer was, uh, the one who made the suggestion, we really need someone to manage these projects, because, uh, to get the, get a project, uh, we need someone in the construction industry with experience of getting projects done, uh, on time, on budget, and, uh, with as few change orders as possible.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. President. So the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars will give us a capital improvement project manager, so that's one position, and a staff?
And a staff person to go.
What, what, do you have an idea of what the salaries will look like?
I, I imagine, uh, because, uh, it's going to depend on market, but I imagine, uh, the salary for the director would probably be somewhere in the eighty to a hundred thousand dollar range, and we're looking at something, uh, you know, a clerical or a little higher for the assistant. But a hundred and fifty thousand may be what we have to spend to get the, uh, the director and a support staff.
And, um, will the one hundred and fifty also include benefits? Or is the benefits going to be paid out through the operating fund?
That'll, that, we would pay that out of the operating budget. This would just be the direct salaries, are we anticipating?
Thank you.
That position, actually, um, the DPW director's working on it with the, with the HR director, which could be ordinance to, uh, with the city council.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um, so that, that's, uh, one of the things I just wanted to highlight. The other thing to, uh, on this, uh, page that I wanted to highlight, on page twenty-three is, as you can see, the, we've kind of organized these. These are, um, if you look at the subtotal, uh, city facility total twenty, these are twenty total, twenty-year projects, and the top fifteen or twenty lines are city, uh, facility projects. Then we have, uh, there's an IT, uh, project. We have some IT improvements that we're phasing in. Uh, and then there's, uh, roads and sidewalks is the next major category. Uh, and then there's, uh, parks and, and, um, parks and open space, um, uh, projects in the next section. And then there's school facilities. It's, the bottom of page twenty-three is the next section. And then it goes to, uh, it finishes up on the following page. There's school facilities that are going to be, uh, handled over a twenty-year period, and then the new schools are a twenty-five-year bonding period. So that's on the top of page twenty-four, is the school facility twenty, twenty-five-year programs. And then there's the vehicles and equipment at five years, and then the vehicles and equipment at ten years, and then the subtotal for the, uh, total general funded debt. Uh, so we're looking at fifteen point two million on page, uh, twenty-four for FY eighteen. Uh, let's see. So I think that's, that, uh, I don't know if I, I'll entertain some questions, but I think those are the highlights I just wanted to get to, uh, for the council to, um, how to read the, the project, uh, the CIP plan. It's a, it's in the exact same format as the prior year, uh, so we tried to keep it consistent, and we'll try and continue to do so.
Thank you very much, very much, Mr. Rynello. At this point, um, before I entertain questions, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on this matter? If not, I'll entertain questions from the committee. If there is somebody from the audience wishes to say a few words, go right ahead. Just identify yourself, please.
Donald Brager, Sixty Kendall Street. I was actually answering someone's text when you asked. What was the topic? I apologize.
So the question is, is this is, we're allowing anybody in the public, this is on the capital improvement plan?
Correct.
If you have anything that you want to discuss or add or to this topic, you're free and welcome to comment now.
Um, I was just wondering, uh, what the next step is with the concession stand. Is this something that will be voted on today? Or is this something that you guys would discuss and then have to forward up to the full council at a later time?
So what we're seeing here in, is on page twenty-three of our capital improvement plan, you'll see in FY two thousand and eighteen, there's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars earmarked through general debt funded projects, the sum of two hundred and fifty million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, excuse me. Uh, this will, after we have a discussion here this evening, this list, of which that's one of them, will be sent to the full council. The full council will, it will vote on this plan. But the next step, which is a critical step, will be funding this. And this particular item that you bring up is an item that needs to be, uh, that we need to bond, for, we need to borrow for, because it's part of the general debt funded projects. And so there's going to need to be a provision or a, um, an item to go ahead and actually do the borrowing for that. So it was a two-step process.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does. May, may I ask another question?
Yes.
What, what would the next step be to secure that funding? Or how does that bond process work?
So it's, it's a little more complex, but the, it's the, the, the easy way that I understand it, essentially, after we vote on this, full council, and if it's approved here and at the full council level, then we expect to get a bond proposal to the tune of fifteen point two million dollars. Is that accurate, Mr. Rynello?
It would probably be less than that, only because the MSBA school projects aren't ready to go, so it would really only be about four, three to four million.
So there's going to be a bond authorization, a borrowing authorization to the tune of three to four million dollars, um, that will go toward, and we will know at that point that this is one of those items that's going to be funded. So this is the first step. The second step is actually funding it. Um, and we, I'm not sure what the time for, Mr. Rynello, what's the timeframe for us to get that bonding authorization?
I, uh, and it's three million nine sixty-four, I believe, is probably, that's the, excluding the, uh, school projects. So that's probably what we would, those projects could probably be ready to go. And we would, I expect we would be down in August, because I think this would get a, there's one meeting in July. So hopefully, the CIP, if it got approved in July, we would, uh, do that. Uh, if there's a, two meetings in July, it's possible we could get to the second meeting. But certainly sometime in August, uh, it would go in the council agenda, get referred to the budget finance, then come back to the council. Uh, it takes a few meetings before the bond authorization would be approved. So it would... So it would be sometime August and probably September by the time we actually borrowed the funds and got the project started, if that makes sense.
It does. It answers my question.
You're welcome. So let me make a plea that I'll do whatever I can, if we can fast-track that bond authorization, count me in as doing that, if it needs to come in for a special meeting, if that's what we need to do. This is important. These are big project, big items. Some of the, is weather-dependent. We want to get some of these things done this year before the end of the year. Some of these things are schools and athletic-related, and we want to get it done before the frost and not have to delay it a year if we don't need to. So if we can at all, I looked at the council president as well, if there's a way at all to fast-track this, please count me as a supporter of that.
Mr. Ryanell. Then, then again, the, I know the council generally meet, I mentioned that they only generally meet in July once, but I, if you are planning two meetings, then the next meeting in July is, meeting by the council is July 11th. So the CIP could be approved there. And then at the next meeting, if we're to meet the, the following week, we could get a bond authorization at that council agenda, which would refer to committee, Budget Finance Committee at the end of July, and then the first meeting in August could be the approval of the bond authorization if the council votes for it.
Okay. Any questions by the, I have some, but I'll wait. Is there any questions from the committee? Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Mr. Abidur.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Mr. Ryanell, the police radio replacement, direct your attention to PD 4, Project Lion Adam, PD 4.
Yep.
Is this the digital communications that the state police is rolling out statewide? And will our police department be able to communicate with the state police, which they currently would not be able to do with their current system?
That's PD 4, so I just want to go to it. But that is to replace the entire, the descriptions on page 32 of the project. It's to replace the, I'll just read it briefly. "Project will replace the police department's aging radio system infrastructure and portable mobile radios over the course of three years. Police department's portal radios and infrastructure are over 15 years old and largely outdated. FCC mandated all public safety radio systems migrate to using a certain frequency." So I think it's exactly what you described. It's a complete replacement.
So I want to make sure. I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate these words in the box. What I will do, since I don't expect you to be a subject matter expert on everything, I will send an email to Chief Fitzpatrick and copy you and ask him that question. Would he be the subject matter expert to ask that question?
He would. And, and again, he would also, we could also have him available for the next council meeting.
I, through you, Mr. Chair, I, I don't know that that would be necessary pertaining to this particular question that I have. I just want to be assured that we are buying the right system for the future, not the system we can afford.
Okay.
If you know what I mean. I, I don't know what police systems cost. It seems like a low number to convert an entire urban city police communications over to a digital program. But again, I don't know what they cost, I've never bought one. And, but I want to be assured by the city that if we spend almost a million dollars on communications, that it is going to be communications that can communicate with the state partners, as well as MIMA and the other emergency partners statewide. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I still go before for more questions?
Sure.
The CIP manager, I highly recommend it. It's a, a good move because it's going to, if that person existed today, they'd be able to answer the question I'm, I'm going to ask in a few moments. In that, I would also note that paying that salary out of capital monies is wise. It is not something that we would get dinged on, any kind of Wall Street look. Whereas capital, I know you know these things, the capital manager is managing capital monies, this mean spend on capital projects. So I, for one, would support that piece of the capital plan. My final question, as I alluded to by the need for a CIP manager, is these cost estimates, for instance, $100,000 to demo the city garage, the solid shed, these type of things, whom develop these cost estimates?
These are from the department heads making their best estimate as to what these are. And, and it's a good point, because that's another thing that the capital improvement manager, project manager would be a little more, that would be his responsibility, maybe track some of these general costs down. But it's very difficult, these costs that are in here, even if we, we had a good cost today, it would be depend on when the, particularly when you're doing a five-year plan, cost five years from now could be so, so much different depending on construction. So they, it is, this is just a plan. It's a roadmap, and it kind of gets us there. And FY '18, you know, since that's only, that's this year, those numbers are hopefully a little more accurate. But as we go out, I know it's, there's a, a less of an ability to get, make them accurate. But that would be the primary responsibility of the CIP managers, to help us develop, you know, what really needs to be done and, and help us derive the estimated costs.
I would recommend that. And, you know, whether that person or the clerk position, you know, for instance, demoing the garage, it just makes me think it's probably old. I, the location wasn't given, but I'm going to assume it's down at the city yard, which makes me start thinking about the age and the possible contaminants and all the fun stuff that goes along with old equipment in the city. And when you go to demo it, all the fun surprises you get, which end up costing much more than you had anticipated. So I, I would hope that the CIP manager would bring a greater level of sophistication to our future planning and to our, our, our numbers. With that, I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Ryanell.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I just want to bring, I've got one question. This is dealing with the O'Connell Park.
Okay.
You know that we're putting money into the park this year with park money, correct? I believe that's correct.
In, let's see, I've got, that's PL Planning 4, $500,000.
Right.
That's in FY '19.
Right. So there's, there's money that we're going to be putting out for debt in 2019 and for the upcoming fiscal year. I thought there was money, maybe it's just coming through park grants rather than through this, is, is that?
Yes.
I believe that's what's happening. I just wanted to confirm that if I can. Do you know that? Not, that's fine, too.
Can you ask the question again? I'm not sure.
Sure. So the O'Connell Park, so.
O'Connell Park, yeah.
We started the process this year to go ahead and make improvements at that park. There's work under, that's taking place now through Park Improvement Monies, P-A-R-C. And I see that there's going to be some money in, in FY 2019. So I'm guessing.
Yeah, I think that was in.
I thought we had money from '17, but maybe.
Yeah, that was in FY, I was just checking. We do have, I'm just going to check in FY '17 to see if we had that in last year's plan for O'Connell Park. And, no, that was in last year's plan under '19 and '20. And there, that, it's a million dollar, it's $500,000 over two years, of which $700,000 was going to be funded out of state programs, is anticipated at state program. And that's what's in this plan.
Anticipated money coming from the state program?
$700,000, this project is a, is a million-dollar project, $500,000 over two years, of which $700,000 will be funded out of grants, and $300,000 will come out of our bond authorization.
Let me just make sure that math makes sense. So I, I see here, O'Connell, see the $1 million for the total project cost. I see that we're making general funded debt for two, two apportionments of a half a million dollars each in FY '19 and FY '20. And you're suggesting that we're also, are we getting in addition to that state funding? Or are you suggesting that, that we're going to be getting reimbursed for this money through the state?
The, the plan includes, from, and from the planning department, that there's $500,000 over two years, of which, which is a million dollars, of which $700,000 will come in, will be funded through a state grant program. So the city will come up with $300,000. That'll be our share of this project. And it's explained on page 32, PL number four, Make Improvements at O'Connell South Common Park. And it indicates the improvements to the park, but not limited to landscaping, lighting, and so on. Highly visits. So they have a bunch of, they describe a bunch of things that they plan on doing to the park. Over the years, the park's activity basis increased from hockey and so on. The city is currently renovating the parks, two diamond, baseball diamonds, I think, though, I think that's a project referred to that is ongoing or has been completed. That was not in the plan. That was already something handled through the planning department, through a grant. So it looks like here, it looks like the large gazebo is unsafe and closed, the street hockey rink was destroyed, and playground needs updating, including handicapped accessibility and expansion.
So here's the one way to do it, I, rather than extend this, I'll send an email to both you and, and Ms. Fink, and just so I can understand this a bit fully, how the park grants are interacting with our debt, our anticipated debt, and how that mingles together and the timing. So I'll, I'll email you, and you can respond to that email.
Sure.
That's the only question that I have, the only comment that I have, being a district councillor from District F, are the following projects, which I'm thrilled to see that are on here. And I'm glad to see that, that, that the mayor has listened to my advocacy on these things. For example, the Museum Square Garage repairs for $200,000. Of course, we just talked, the South Lawrence East Concessions Restorations for $250,000. There is a cane park remediation for $150,000. And, and we just talked here a little bit about the money that are currently being spent on the O'Connell South Common. So these are all things that are positive, and I'm appreciative that the mayor was able to listen and has found his way to make these important, important changes. And also, although I do share this with council from District D, the Branch Library is getting in a couple of important improvements. One of them is the replacing of the roof there, as well as the electrical system in the Branch Library. So these are needed.
I would note that the library is entirely in District D. Thank you, councillor.
Many of the people who, many of the people who attend there park in District F and cross the street. Go ahead, Mr. Abidur. Anything else you want to say about that?
It was just a wise guy comment. I'll keep it to myself.
Very good.
Very good. So thank you. Those are my comments.
Okay.
If there's no other, is there, are there more comments or not? We can move on it? Or we can make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we send it up to the full council with a favorable recommendation to be approved.
Second.
Motion made, it's been seconded. No further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, the ayes have it. We had a very full meeting this evening, gentlemen. I don't think there's anything else we want to talk about, is there? So I'm, I'm really happy, frankly, about the payment of lieu tax program. I'm glad we were able to bring some life to that, and I look forward to having that discussion later with more detail. It's a good stuff. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion made, and seconded. If you have a say, aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.